I would actually like to call to order the June 28th, 2022 Regular Meeting of the Columbia Heights Public Schools Board of Education. If you are able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you so much, everyone, for being here and for watching, who's ever watching at home on this very beautiful evening we have going right now. Don, in Mary's absence, would you be willing to do the roll call?
Sure.
Member Lewis?
Here. I should have warned you, sorry.
Member Sieverson?
Here.
Member Mueller?
Here.
Member Zeman?
Here.
Member Bramlin? Member Palmer? Superintendent Stenbik?
Here.
All right, thank you. We'll move on with our mission statement. Our mission statement is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. And our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Tonight, we're going to actually start with a Highlander highlight. Tonight, the board would like to honor Ben Olson for a second face place, second face, second place finish at the state track tournament, track and field meet, and the long jump. Unfortunately, Ben is not able to be here tonight, but I do believe we have our Activities Director Jake Henderson, who would like to say some words.
I would. Thank you, Chair Sieverson, members of the board, Superintendent Stenbik. Thank you for having me. Had us on there, but there may have been a communication with Ben, unfortunately. He was all ready to come. I did shoot him a message saying that I wouldn't be able to be there in person tonight. My son tested positive for COVID this morning, so, board members, I apologize if you were in that van on Friday at the parade with him. But anyways, I did tell him, you know, I would be online and hopefully he would be meeting, but maybe he had a little bit of a miscommunication there, so, sorry for that. But really exciting to, to honor him. He placed, like you said, second in the long jump at the state tournament. And, you know, I've known Ben since middle school. He's been a Highlander's that has gone here since elementary school. He's a fantastic young man, and I'm really proud of him. He actually qualified in both the high jump and the long jump, and he was an alternate on the four-by-eight-hundred-meter relay team, which is pretty amazing. And I was really excited that he had the opportunity his senior year to go to state and to be, and actually placed second in the long jump. So, he placed second with twenty-two feet, two and a half inches. And there was, so he was doing the long jump and the high jump both at the same time, back and forth. He probably made fifteen to twenty jumps within that hour. And so I'm sure he was exhausted, but we had a big group of Heights supporters out there, parents as well as student athletes and his friends, so it was really exciting to see. I'm super proud of him. He has an opportunity to go back and, and compete at the next level, actually, in track and field. So, really exciting for him. And, you know, if he was there, I have wished him congratulations, but we're really, really, really proud of him.
All right. Well, thank you for sharing that. It is exciting to have, we've had a really successful year in the, in the arts, fine arts and athletics this year at Heights. It's been incredible to celebrate all the things that are happening. So, Ben, congratulations on behalf of the board. Any other board members have any, anything they want to add?
Yeah, I mean, I would love to. I think it's okay if I say this, but I think Ben might have taken up an opportunity to go to a track meet that was going on this evening with some of his peers. So, I'm pretty sure that's why he's not here, which just speaks to his commitment to sports. He is really dedicated, and I think the coaches would all say he was like the first one there or the last one to leave. His dedication was incredible. And so, congratulations to Ben. It's been exciting watching him grow over the years. I actually had an opportunity to coach him in basketball when he was a youngster, so it was very cool. He's a good kid.
Yeah, just congratulations. What an accomplishment and what a great way to kind of put the exclamation point at the end of your senior year. Excited to see what's next for Ben, so, congratulations, Ben.
Yeah, we're just so proud of you. Great job. We know you worked hard and you got Heights pride in you, so.
I'm trying to imagine a world where I could jump twenty-two feet and two and a half inches. My kids make fun of me for the way I jump. They say I land like a bowling ball, and they're right. So, congrats, Ben, on athleticism and hard work. We'll have the certificate probably sent to your house, is my guess, since you've graduated. So, thank you on behalf of the school board and your classmates, who I'm sure they're very proud of you. All right. Thank you, Director Henderson. We will move on to the approval of the agenda. If I could have a motion to move that forward?
So moved.
All right.
Second.
Lorian, Molly, any discussion on the agenda? All right. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. We will move on then to the announcements. The announcements Tuesday, June, Tuesday, June 28th at 7:00 PM, there's a regular school board meeting here in the community room. Tuesday, July 19th at 7:00 PM, there was a regular school board meeting tentatively scheduled, which we are now not having. So, there, we are canceling the July 19th, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, regular school board meeting that would have been here in the community room. August 9th are preliminary elections, and August 10th, Wednesday, Wednesday, August 10th, there will be a regular school board meeting here in the community room, which is a change. Normally, we're on Tuesdays, so note that if you're watching at home or you had planned to come talk to the board, because that will be the next time we meet. It will be August 10th. So, if you want to come down and communicate to the board, we'd love to hear from you. Also, by way of announcement, we would like to offer our deepest condolences to our friend and colleague Laura Palmer on the sudden loss of her husband. I asked if we could have a moment of silence to celebrate his life and just to offer our condolences to her family during this time, and she said it would be much appreciated. So, we would like to just take a moment of silence to remember Craig Palmer and his importance to their family and our community. So, if you would. All right. Thank you for participating in that. We'll move on to correspondence, always the awkward segue. Superintendent Stenbik, is there any correspondence this evening?
Madam Chair, there's no correspondence at this time.
All right. Thank you. We'll move on to communication to the board. As I just mentioned, we would love to hear from you. If you want to come talk to our board, we would love to hear from you in that way. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and, if desired, request that the administration follow up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. Seeing no one here, and Donna, you don't have any secret blue cards hiding out? All right. We will move, we'll move on from that.
Okay.
Move on then to the consent agenda. Can we have a motion to move that forward?
So moved.
Lorian? Second?
Second.
Brenna? Discussion?
Yes, I would like to remove the personnel report from the consent agenda.
All right. And that needs no motion, correct? As we learned, it does not, right? All right, so the personnel report has been removed from the consent agenda, which leaves us with the final thing that's actually in the consent agenda is the workers' compensation insurance renewal. And this was discussed at the June 14th meeting of this year. So, we'll move forward with the consent agenda containing the workers' compensation and renew, insurance renewal. Correct as it stands? All right. Any further discussion on that? All right. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Having removed the personnel report from the consent agenda, we'll now address the personnel report. Can I have a motion to discuss the personnel report?
I want a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, excuse me, motion to approve the personnel report.
So moved.
Lorian?
Second.
Second? Brenna? Discussion?
At this time, I need to remove someone from the personnel report pursuant to, let me get this right, statute 122A dot four zero, employment for contracts and termination. And this is related to my son, Keon Lewis. So, we're just pulling him from the personnel report because as a board, we need to vote as a whole board when we're hiring someone. Part of the language here that reads, "A teacher related by blood or marriage within the fourth degree computed by the civil law to a board member shall not be employed except by unanimous vote by the full board." So, just for that reason only, just pulling Keandre Lewis off the personnel report.
Okay.
So then Molly would need to make a motion to...
Yes.
Okay.
You will make a motion to remove Keandre Lewis from the personnel report.
So, I am making the motion to remove Keon Lewis.
All right.
Second.
All right. Molly? Lorian? Discussion on removing Keandre Lewis from the personnel report?
Is that, this is, again, just to reiterate, this is only for the purpose that we need to have all six members of the board voting on this hire, and we have two board members absent today.
We are unable to comply with state law tonight.
There's no other reason for the removal.
Fun times, state law. Thank you, Donna, for researching that for us.
Yes.
All right. We'll vote on the motion to remove Keandre Lewis from the personnel report. All those in favor?
Well, then, Donna has it.
And she will make a motion for that.
Molly made that motion.
I want a motion to remove him from the personnel report, not to approve it. Or you want to make it...
I'm making, I'm doing, I'm getting a vote on the removal of Keandre.
I'm sorry.
Yep, that's all right. All those in favor of removing Keandre from the personnel report? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? All right, that motion carries, which brings us back to the motion we originally started in, which is the approval of the personnel report. Now, we are doing the approval of the personnel report sans Mr. Lewis.
So moved.
So, move, okay. So, motion, motion. Second, we're already in that motion, so we don't need a motion in a second.
Oh, I believe so, correct.
So, that was, that motion was made by Lorian and seconded by Brenna, so now we're moving back to that. We need a new motion.
A new motion to reflect the...
So Molly has the motion now.
May I, can we do ten out?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, we removed the personnel report from the consent agenda. We didn't need a motion to do that. Then we approved the consent agenda. Right. Then we had a motion to approve the personnel report.
We made a...
So, we had a motion initially to approve...
We made an original motion.
The personnel report so that we could have discussion. So, we have the original motion.
Okay, sorry, my, my...
The original motion to approve the personnel report was, the motion was made by Lorian, and it was seconded by Brenna. And so, we're still inside that theoretical bowl, correct?
Yep.
Okay, so we're still voting in that motion. So, we are voting in that motion. Great.
On the amended personnel report.
Now, it's on the amended personnel report, so the vote is for the amended, the amended personnel report that no longer includes Mr. Lewis. All right, so, any discussion on that? All right, we'll take a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstained? All right, motion carries. And I think we are in compliance with the state of Minnesota. All right. We'll move on to the acknowledgements of contributions. This is kind of a fun one. I'm going to read the motion and then, or read the resolution and then ask for a motion on that resolution. This is the acknowledgement of contributions resolution. Whereas Minnesota statute 123B point oh two permits school boards to receive for the benefit of the district, bequest donations or gifts for any proper purpose, and apply the same to the purpose designated. In that behalf, the board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of pupils thereof. Therefore, be it resolved by the School Board of Columbia Heights Public Schools, Independent School District Number 13, that the school board accepts with appreciation the contributions detailed in the background in the amount of $12,340. Detailed background, monetary contributions. The following donations were made by the Columbia Heights activities were made, the following donations were made to the Columbia Heights Activities Department. The Columbia Heights Athletic Boosters Club donated $600 for boys' swimming calendar sales. The Columbia Heights Athletic Boosters donated $170 for girls' basketball calendar sales. The Columbia Heights Athletic Boosters donated $20 for bowling calendar sales. The Columbia Heights Athletic Booster Club donated $2,000 for dance youth camp. The Columbia Heights Athletic Boosters Club donated $1,500 for summer camp, for summer sampler camp. The following donations were made to the Columbia Heights High School Scholarship Fund. Delora Peterson, $500. HG Clay Foundation, $5,000. PEO Chapter EZ, $500. John Rockwell, $250. Peter Herilla, $250. The family of Pat Sawada, $1,000. And Pamela Schwintz, $50. Value in kind. Donation of bikes and helmets were made to the Columbia Heights Public School students by Columbia Heights Police Department for Student Needs. Estimated value, $500. Can I, I'm making, can I have a motion to accept the acknowledgements of contribution?
So moved.
Oh, we'll give it to Brenna. Second?
Yeah, second.
Second, all right. Hold on. Document this. Brenna? Molly? Any discussion?
Just one item to note. You omitted the total fiscal year monetary contributions. If you wanted to add that, or if you wanted me to...
Yeah, go ahead and read it.
That the 2021, 2022 monetary contributions to date are $236,340.70.
Thank you.
And I will just add to that comment. Thank you very much for continued generous support of our, from our community members. And a big hurrah to the Columbia Heights Athletic Boosters for their continued support as well.
Agreed. All right. This is a roll call vote because it's a resolution, so, Donna, if you wouldn't mind? Lewis?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Sieverson?
Aye.
Zeman?
Aye.
All right, resolution passes. We will move on then to, sorry, save my note. Discussion, reports, and information items, and we'll begin with reports from members of the board. Lorian, if you're ready, I'll lead off with you.
Sure, absolutely. Since our last meeting, I attended the chair meeting last week prior to the work session and attended the work session, which I thought we had some really good conversations about some good topics. So, appreciate everybody's participation in that. I had a conversation with Superintendent Stenbik and attended the chair meeting just prior to this meeting. That's it for me.
All right. Brenna?
Since our last meeting, I was at the work session as well, and I was able to be part of the parade, which was super fun, see the whole community out, and yeah, riding the COVID band, so that was awesome.
All right. Molly?
Yeah, I didn't participate in a lot last couple weeks for reasons already mentioned, unfortunately. I did have an opportunity on Friday night. I missed the parade with you all for a fundraiser for the Black Men Teach program, and that was phenomenal. It was so great to see the support and the work that they're doing and meeting those needs. It's going to be a long journey, but they're doing great work, and I'm excited for them. And that's all I have to report on. Thanks.
All right. I was also, I missed our last meeting, so I'll be reporting back a little bit further, and so I get to tell you a good reminder of graduation night, and the rain held off, and we were able to have a fun graduation outside, so congratulations again. I'm sure we've already said this to all the 2022 graduates. I was also able to attend the parade, which was a lot of fun, and probably the fastest-paced parade in the history of parades. I mean, we were huffing it to keep up. It was a blitz, and then like three floats after us, it like slowed down to like a grinding hall, and then it was a normal-paced parade, so it was kind of funny. So, if you saw your school board out there with the superintendent huffing it, that was us, yeah. Just really trucking along. Also, I was able to have a meeting, a discussion with Superintendent Stenbik and also with members of our community. So, that concludes board reports for tonight. We'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. I also enjoyed walking in the, in the quick-paced parade, but it was awesome to see, see the community and lots of kids recognizing, you know, their principal or recognizing our Columbia Heights shirts. It was fun. I also attended a one-day conference called Leading for the Future with several other superintendents from the metro area. I was able to meet with the superintendents from Spring Lake Park and St. Anthony to discuss the Patriots marching band and to see what the options are for Columbia Heights to rejoin. So, more to come on that. I attended a Metro EXU Executive Committee meeting, and since the last board meeting, over a two-day period, the admin team worked very collaboratively to reflect on the past school year and to plan for the upcoming school year. And since that meeting, I have had conversations with every single board member. Yeah, so thank you for your time.
All right. Great. We will move on to the Heighten Up update. Well, that's a fun thing to say, and I'd like to welcome Director Tara Tuckrell and Executive Director Bundo Niambwe.
Good evening, Chair Sieverson, Superintendent Stenbik, and members of the board. Tonight, Director Tuckrell and myself are very excited to give you an update on the Heighten Up after such a, I will say, wonderful school year, even though it has its own bumps. I think we are proud of the work that our teachers and our principals and members of the districts that have done. So, our mission in Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. Tonight's presentation will incorporate all our core values, and equally important, the Columbia Heights Public Schools core values are aligned with the Columbia Heights Public School Board of Education Equity Statement. This is an informational update and no governance questions. So, as you know, and have seen this beautiful slide time and time again, there are four components to our Heighten Up journey, which in and of itself reflect the equity that we are working with in our districts. So, that is academic acceleration, mental health support, family and community engagement, and facilities upgrade. So, one of the component of Heighten Up is academic acceleration, one of which we came into this year very excited because our chief mission was to focus on growth when we think of academics. While it's important to look at proficiency, coming from the pandemic, we wanted to see how well our students can grow and show us that they're resilient. And to that, to that point, we also focus on alignment to literacy instruction. In our work with the principal, we say that we're going to make literacy our equity mission, and so ensuring that students can read, can write. And so, we did a lot of work around alignment where in every school, students were required and expected to read for fifteen to twenty minutes. Teachers were teaching in the whole group and then focusing on a small group, and we also provided some intervention. PLC has been some work that the district has been doing for the past three years, and we've continued to do that where we're allowing adults to learn together and grow together. And, you know, the board was kind enough to support our initiative of instructional coaches who are working alongside our principals to review, to support teachers in the work that they do and to model sometime how to do instruction in a different way. And then, we also have a reading interventionist specialist in K-5. This cadre of people that exist in all our three elementary schools were instrumental in supporting students who are in the middle to be able to learn some skills that were holding them back and be able to succeed in their literacy as well as in math. And then tutoring is one that we believe that many students were going to need coming into this second year of the pandemic by returning in person. And so, there is a lot we provided around tutoring, and we'll share a little bit about that later. And then data days was a new thing that was implemented this year to allow us to look back at the work that was done and to feed forward in terms of what else can we do better. And we add that for data days. And finally, professional development in terms that you're very familiar with, where we believe that adults need to continue to learn. And part of our professional development this year, led by and supported by our Department of Teaching and Learning, was ensuring that in every school, every adult was participating in equity professional development as well as academics. So, literacy, which is, we are proud to report on that we, we've made some progress. And the first slide that we're going to look at here is our FAST Data, which is showing us proficiency from fall to spring. As you can see, the yellow line is the score, the starting score in the fall, where each grade level was from kindergarten up to eighth grade. And then, the blue line is where we ended up in the spring. And if you're looking carefully, you can see that first grade, second grade, fifth grade, and sixth grade did really well. From fall to spring, you can see that the students grew, and that is to be celebrated. As you know, you've probably heard us say this before, the goalpost move. So, we assess in the fall, we assess in the winter, and we assess in the spring. The content gets more difficult, but you can see that our students were able to do well in terms of proficiency. While we made this growth, we believe we still have ways to go. And one more important thing to mention is, for ninth grade, there is only a blue line. This was our first year implementing the FAST Assessment in ninth grade. And so, in the coming year, you will see that we'll be able to report on that fall, winter, and spring as well. And this year, when I talked about academic acceleration, we talked about a focus on growth. And this is beautiful because, as you look from kindergarten to eighth grade, we wanted to see how many students were going to have a typical growth or an aggressive growth. And a simple way of understanding this is that typical growth is your average growth, but your aggressive growth is accelerated growth. So, you're seeing a combined score here of typical and aggressive growth for each grade level. And what is most positive about this is that at every grade level, we had more than forty percent of our students achieving that typical or aggressive growth. And so, we thank our teacher, we thank our principal, we thank our coaches, we thank our students for working hard and be able to meet their goals that they set at the beginning of the year.
Good evening, Chair Sieverson, members of the board, Superintendent Stenbik. I'm going to share a little about our math progress this school year. And as Executive Director Niambwe shared, we have a lot to celebrate and a lot, a lot to look forward to next year. So, here is our proficiency for math. It's a more steady picture, and as mentioned before, the goalposts changes. So, if you were proficient in the fall, you need to gain a lot of skills and growth in order to be proficient in the spring. And so, we have a lot to celebrate on this slide as we look at a lot of grade levels going up in proficiency. And as we look at the next slide, high growth in math. And as we reflected on this together with our teachers and directors, we really thought about math for many reasons, probably has higher growth, and one of them is it's more of a universal language. So, as we look at a lot of our students who are multilingual, Executive Director Niambwe was sharing that they tend to have higher growth in math as it's more universal. We also noticed a large growth with the implementation of PLCs and the concentration on that, as well as starting a tier-two intervention of class-wide intervention of spring math in our K-5. So, a lot of growth here to celebrate, and once again, thanks to all who were involved in that, including our families, for supporting math at home.
So, we're going to move on from academic... So we're going to move on from academic acceleration to another component of Heighten Up, which, you know, at times we have emotion when we talk about mental health because it's become a serious thing in our schools, in our homes. And so we did provide a lot of support for mental health. So for, to start off, the Change to Chill, which is a grant that we had received in partnership with Alana Healthcare that supported each school to create a space where students could go and relax. Not they're in trouble, but when they needed a place to reflect, to just chill. Those rooms were beautified, furniture was provided, and so students were able to use those rooms throughout the year. Secondly, we also increased in mental health support with the addition of social worker and school psychologists in terms of staffing. We presented on this before and we are satisfied. Not 100%, because we can use additional social work and psychologists, but the work that they did was incredible from supporting students, from giving them access to resources within the community and be able to be there and listen to their needs. And then, right now, we're in the summer month. The social work in school psychologists will be supporting our students in the summer as well. We start on July 11. And so that support is also available then. We also increase in therapeutic support for students in the anchor program at CA and at the high school, which covers the entire summer. So it's nice to see that this support that began at the beginning of the year in September are continuing even during the summer because we've seen that our students still need support in mental health. And finally, social, emotional learning, resources, and training were provided and will continue to support students and staff in the classroom in the coming years. Family engagement, which is the third component of Heighten Up, as Dr. Director Tuckrell mentioned, that not only are our families supporting their students at home, and so we in schools found a way to continue to support our families by answering their questions, but also empowering them by showing them how they can better support students. So the EL Family Nights continued in all our elementary and secondary schools. The REACH training, to which we gave you a presentation early in the year. And the picture, the bottom right corner was the REACH graduation. We finally had our REACH graduation, I believe it was May 22, and it was well-attended. Parents were very pleased and they came, as you can see, they have their cups and then they have their shelves. And some of the comments that we heard from parents is that they had never walked at a school graduation. And so this was good for us to celebrate with them. In-person and virtual family engagement activities continued because we were very conscientious about families who did not yet want to come in public or what's more, children. And so some schools engage families by playing bingo online and other activities. And then a positive of the year, as the year went on, we saw that many of the schools were able to return to their old activities, like field day took place at every school, although when one of those days was very cold and, but families and students still showed up and participated. We know that North Park had their barbecue and end-of-year concert, and it was just beautiful to see families excited about coming back to see the school. And then we also added a homeschool liaison at the high school throughout the pandemic. And finally, because we all became so technologically savvy, we continue to provide technology training for our families to access our online platforms.
Our final component of Heighten Up Plan is facility upgrades. And this, I think you have seen probably a few times already from Director Hennigan's. Our focus of facility upgrades was the indoor air quality. And it was divided into three different phases with phase one really studying and figuring out the areas of need that we have and developing a plan. We're currently in phase two as we see the construction happening all around us, upgrading HVAC in some common spaces, including the Columbia Academy and Columbia Heights High School gym and cafeteria, which are currently underway. And then phase three will continue the implementation of the plan development. So as we look back at this school year, we'll also take a minute to look forward. As we look back, it was mentioned that we've had many celebrations, and this is a very small list, but there are many more that we could add. Our biggest one really is the students' resilience, watching the kids walk, the students walking down the hallways every day. It's been an up and down year with COVID, the pandemic, and different things happening. And they continue to be smiling and enjoying their time and finding joy. And the resilience with academics, as well as athletics and activities, all the different pieces, our staff desire to help. We wouldn't be able to get through the last couple of years without the staff stepping up and supporting each other and including district staff. When there was a time of need, it was everybody figuring it out together how to support a classroom or support staff. The community support has been huge, including donations that have been mentioned every board meeting, resources, time, partnerships. And then the student opportunities. Our focus on creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner continued throughout this year. When we look at the number of students taking AP tests to the number of students walking down in graduation or the different athletics and the arts happening, there really were a lot of opportunities available for our students. As mentioned earlier, there were many challenges in this school year. And as we look back at the school year, there definitely was an increase in mental health needs for students, staff, and families. Staff shortage, which leads into the next one of a need for substitutes. It was difficult to fill a lot of the positions, and we rarely had substitutes on many of the days during the busy COVID times. So staff stepping up and supporting each other was huge during that time to support students. And then the last one, Executive Director Niambwe talked about earlier as well about the mental health needs. We definitely have a lot of amazing staff, and with the increase in needs, it's been hard to fill those other positions.
Moving forward, so into next year, it's already almost the end of June, so we do think about 2022, 2023. And so some of the great work that my colleagues have done at the district, at the school level, is to continue collaboration with outside agencies to support academics. We know that we can do the work, but partnership with others from the community can only enhance how much our students are supported so that we can reach our intended outcome. Virtual tutoring for Avid students will be introduced. In the past, Avid, we've had college students who came and tutor. Director Tuckrell and I and Emily have been working with some virtual tutoring company that we've been impressed with. And so we're going to continue to support Avid with that because that also gives students the benefit of being at home at 11:00 PM and they're struggling with their writing, they can submit their essay and get feedback on this back. Hybrid tutoring for elementary students will continue. We have another company that will be able to provide tutoring in the virtual while students are in school with the support of their teachers. So we're excited about that and see how that's going to influence and positively affect their academic learning. We are also going to continue with Virtual Heights, but this time only for secondary students. A few of us were able to relay a report from Virtual Heights, and it was impressive to see that there is a high passage rate in terms of classes that they took and the satisfaction rates from this adult support is admired. We're also going to focus next year on a multi-tiered system of support in academic and social, emotional learning as well as behavior. The elementary schools are going to receive more support by having an SEL curriculum to support what we already have in place for responsive classrooms. And then there will be an increase in after-school and summer opportunity, like we've seen right now, there is more students wanting to come. Then we have teachers to support them, so we have a waiting list for summer school. And then Dr. Fry informed us that we are going to receive eight social workers intern who will work alongside our social worker and support our families. So we're very excited about the reflections we've had. And this short presentation gives you a glimpse of what has happened and what is to come. And we are proud to be in Heights and working for our families. And this is our concluding slide, and we'll take any questions.
All right, questions?
I do.
Yeah.
I was just taking, writing my notes. Thank you both for the, the presentation. I think is, we're often challenged as we, as we talk about some of these things. I think there's always been the acknowledgement that we've got, you know, continued work to do. But looking at this and looking at what you've presented to us, not only, you know, seeing the numbers of our students who on the FAST test were showing proficiency, but acknowledging and taking this time, you know, for me, I want to express my appreciation to our, our teachers, our staff, our support teams. It was, it was a hard year. It was, I don't, I don't even think we want to talk about it. I think we all had to end the year and, and move on. Everybody worked really, really hard. And it, it was, it was challenging, but to, you know, I took some notes here in literacy, 41% to 60% of typical or aggressive growth, and in math, 49% to 65%. What our teams did made a difference to our kids. So just kudos to them and, and I appreciate all that, that they've done. I apologize. I mean, I'm having a tough night with Member Palmer's situation, so I just, I want to just say I'm struggling here today, but I just, I want to let our teams know that we really appreciate them and the growth that, that has been demonstrated and their hard work is appreciated and it has made a difference. And I hope that that provides the energy and the motivation to say, what you're doing is, is working. Let's take what's working and continue to do it. Let's focus on where we need to focus if there's other areas of growth. But I think we have to commend what was able to be accomplished in a very challenging year. That was not as succinct as I wanted it to be.
That's all right. You can have a tough night.
It's good, but good word. I mean, it's encouraging to see those numbers. I was going to ask, on the, the orange bar graphs, I can see it here on my monitor, but you know, that just the one, the literacy growth, the 43% to 60%, is that like, is that like a extra, extra good? Or is that, like, what's our typical growth rate in the, like, what, what would we normally see for growth?
If Tara, Director Tuckrell will respond if she has a response.
Or am I just, if I'm asking too hard of a question because you're like, I would have put the graph there if I had it.
Previous years, our district assessment coordinator just got kicked out of the meeting, otherwise she would have exact numbers for you. It is higher than previous years.
Great.
It is a lot attributed to the work that the teachers have done and the admin have done in creating high goals. Their goals were higher than previous years, yet we know with the pandemic, nationwide, we've seen a drop in proficiency and growth. And yet the teachers were able to work together to get their growth higher than we have had in previous years.
That's awesome. That's what we want to hear, the high academic standards, right? Go ahead, Molly.
Yeah, one of the things that you attributed that to was PLCs. And I'm just wondering, for people that are listening, if you can kind of talk about how you believe those PLCs impact this, like, what that means.
What does PLC mean?
Yes.
It's an acronym we toss around a lot.
Yeah.
We do. Thank you. PLCs are a professional learning community where teachers come together, whether it's at the grade level or the department. They analyze the standards and what they're teaching and the content. They use assessments to look at the story that students are telling us in terms of what they know of the standards and what they need more support on. And then they create goals. So the teacher teams work together to create goals that we're going to get to this point and here's what we're going to do. And in order to do those things, they're doing interventions and supports or acceleration. So they're really using data to inform their instruction on every little piece. And they're meeting every week at least one time, looking at data, analyzing their work, sharing instructional strategies with each other so that I'm not just in my room closing the door, we're sharing what's working. We're looking across the different grade levels, we're looking across the different departments to figure out what's working and how we can help our students and each other more.
That's great.
Yeah, I just, the, the growth numbers versus the proficiency numbers, I'm so glad that you're keeping track in that way. Especially in a year like this, I have a second grader that lost the end of kindergarten and all of first grade. And to see that the growth numbers were at 60% for second graders that are learning to read, having lost the years that you learned to read, like, that's huge. Even if they're not at where a second grader would have been pre-pandemic, that growth is amazing. And I know, I mean, I also have an older student that got one-on-one reading help that would not have been given to her in other years. Like, we've, we've invested in that in, in huge ways, and I just want to say you guys are doing a great job. And I have seen it in my own kids really pay off, and I think that these numbers really, really show that that's, we're gaining background that we lost. And so just good job, really proud of what you guys are doing, so.
And will Heighten Up, Heighten Up continue into the 2223 school year?
Yep. So Heighten Up is really our, we're working under the slogan of Heighten Up and that plan for pandemic recovery purposes, right? And so it's also a way for us to be accountable with the federal COVID funding. And so that's, you know, there are other building projects going on, but Heighten Up in the COVID funding was about indoor air quality. So that's why it's really limited to that. So it will continue into the next school year, and we'll be transitioning all of this good work into our multi-tiered systems of support, MTSS. So we'll, as we're hopefully sunsetting this pandemic, we'll sunset Heighten Up and move into the same metrics, but under a different, hopefully more normal.
We have the same level of interventions or is some of that money going to go away?
Yeah, no, that, we'll have the same, same level of interventions.
That's awesome.
Well, some of what we're, can I continue?
Yeah, go.
As we did our training on multi-tiered systems of support this year, we noticed across the district that we have a lot of great things happening, but what we need to do is bring them all together in alignment. And so the FAST assessment, we've had it, but now it's being fully implemented, being really analyzed in a more succinct and systematized way. So, yeah, we'll be able to keep, keep doing that.
Great. Any other questions? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the school climate surveys, and this one will be Director Tuckrell and Disa Fabik, our research and assessment coordinator.
I believe Disa's back on. Good evening, Superintendent, or good evening, Chair Sieverson, members of the board, Superintendent Senvik. I'm here tonight with Disa Fabik, our research and assessment coordinator, to share our school climate surveys. Our mission in Columbia Heights Public Schools of creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed, and really focusing in on the first three core values of community excellence and collaboration as we look at our surveys tonight, which our values are also aligned with the Columbia Heights Public Schools Board of Education Equity Statement. And this is an informational presentation, so there'll be no governance questioning to follow. I'm going to pass it over to Coordinator Fabik. Maybe we lost her again. Checking in with Dawn to see if she sees her coming back in or not.
She was in, but...
That's what I thought. She was in.
Yeah.
And then she had me share her screen, or the screen. Well, I can do some of the slides, and when she jumps back in, she might add some more details because she was all ready to share about them. As presented earlier, as was shared earlier, we took a different turn on our surveys. In the past years, we've done one company that we paid for a survey, and we had very low participation. And we weren't able to change some of the questions or add different questions in. So this year, we took a different approach to it, which we have shared with the board and everyone earlier. And so we, oh, I see her back on. So for our student survey this year, we use a Minnesota Student Survey. And you can see our participation was very high on that. And what we're really excited about is the family one. Disa created, with the support of administration and others, a locally-created Google survey, and we've had high participation with it. So a lot higher numbers than we've had in the past. And then for our staff one is also a different survey. We use a Gallup poll. And then for our staff one, it's also a different survey, we use a Gallup poll. And this is a twelve-question survey, and we'll be sharing more about that, too. And our numbers for our staff were high. So with that, Disa, I'll pass it on to you.
Yes, good evening, Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Stendvik. As Director Tuckrell was saying, it's really exciting not to only see the academic side, but of course, the social, emotional, mental health support. And here, really from our families, from our students, from our staff, how are they feeling? And so the first couple of slides is going to focus on our student survey, the Minnesota Student Survey. And you can see that students, as they're getting closer to graduating high school, of course, are thinking more of post-secondary options. Fifth graders are not asked that on the Minnesota Student Survey, so this is the only question that you'll see that NA, too. But it's an interesting incline. And the bottom question about the usefulness of learning, we see that across elementary, middle, and high school, students are really telling us what their learning is valuable in their life. And of course, the students care about doing well. They may not love all subjects they indicated, but they do care about doing well and finding ways to make it useful for their life. So moving on, again, still the student survey, we see that a lot of the schools, especially at the high school, are seeing that the school rules are fair and something that they're agreeing to. And all of these questions are agree or strongly agree. So it includes both of those two response types. And we see one of the highest strongly agree and agree percentages for students feeling like teachers care about them. And the wording itself said teachers, but a lot of the students responded that staff in general as well. So that was something that the Minnesota Student Survey included, that teachers and staff are, are really showing and students are feeling cared about. And the last question about the students feeling that they agree or strongly agree that they feel safe inside school was, again, very, very high at elementary, middle, and high school as well, all above eighty-one percent. In the Minnesota Student Survey, there are a lot of questions, and we also wanted to focus on some of them with things like physical activity and sleep, because we know with the pandemic, we've seen a lot of shifts in that. We've seen shifts in that with families, with students, with adults. And so we wanted to check in on where our students are at with that. So the first question is about physical activity for four or more days during the week. So this was one of our lower responded questions for agree or strongly agree. And a lot of this had to do with probably extracurricular. So the survey was given in the middle of February, so we wanted to take that into account as well. So a little bit less of outside sports, kids getting outside when they get home from school or walking with friends. So that was something to take into account, but lower than, of course, we want. And the lowest of the survey that we were looking at, sleep surprisingly is high. And I say that surprisingly because we've looked at past trends, and it's a little bit higher this year than in the past. So the Minnesota Student Survey is given every three years. And so above seventy percent, or mostly around seventy percent for most of our student population answering this, getting seven or more hours of sleep was exciting to see. And then the last two questions focus a little bit more on mental health needs. So the percentage of students who feel good about themselves very often or almost always, we can see that's hovering around, you know, fifty-three, sixty-two, around that percentage. And then this percentage of students who feel like they can express their feelings appropriately very often or almost often, again, was a little bit lower. So speaking to those mental health needs, and it sounds like we're getting even more support, I know this year we had ample support, which was really welcomed by the students and received very well by the staff as well. So just speaking to the need of, there have been a lot of shifts, and the students are echoing that around the state and in our district. So as Director Tuckrell said, the family survey was so well-received this year. We had so many responses, which we really value because we want a better cross-section of what our families are thinking and feeling and experiencing. So we did include early childhood, so you'll see that column added. They also just had one question that they chose to exclude from the survey, but there are more that is covered. And so the percentage of families who agree or strongly agree that school rules are fair, just like our students, was actually pretty high, so around the high sixties, low seventies, mid-seventies. And they also felt like the
Oh.
the atmosphere inside the building was safe. So we asked questions about outside the building and inside, and both responded in the nineties or high eighties for agree or strongly agree. And last but not least, I went a little bit out of order, sorry about that, the middle one is about communication. So is communication strong? Ironic that I skipped that one. Communication is easily accessible by families. And we saw this, too, in the survey, is that we sent it out via Google, which is able to change into multiple languages. But we also sent it out in Spanish because a lot of our families asked for a Spanish version. And we had about equal participation in the Spanish versus the English survey sent the Google form. So hopefully that speaks to the easy communication by the buildings and the programs for family centers. And then the last slide for our family center survey, at the top question about families being, feeling like they feel that the teacher is giving useful feedback. So we asked that of the students on the Minnesota Student Survey, and we're asking that of the families. And we do see that a lot of families feel that it was useful. We see the highest percentage at early childhood, a little bit of a dip in middle school, but then pretty high overall. The second question on the screen about the families who feel that adults help students handle difficult situations. So again, we saw that pretty low on the Minnesota Student Survey with mental health needs, expressing feelings appropriately. This is for sure statewide, if not nationwide. But we did see that families are saying that would be great to get more support in this area, especially at the high school. We had a sixty percent agree or strongly agree. And then the last question is, again, about teaching that emotions, how to handle those constructively. You know, we can have these big emotions, but what do we do with it? So again, families are echoing what students are telling us, is yeah, we need a little bit more support with this.
For our staff survey, we did that twelve-question Gallup survey. And we had high participation in this one as well, and saw a high number in staff responding they are satisfied or highly satisfied with the working conditions in Columbia Heights. So a celebration there of eighty-seven percent. And then divided it into a couple of categories of the highest ranking items and the lowest ranking items. And our highest ranking items in the district right now are that someone at work, my manager or someone else seems to care about me, and my coworkers are committed to doing quality work, which talks to our presentation earlier and the comments made by our school board members about the high quality of work that our staff really are doing to support students and families. Our areas to continue to work on, or I have the materials that they need. And when we think about materials, we think about things, like it could be curriculum or books, but also resources, time, staffing, other pieces, support, would all fall into that category. And then in the last seven days that they've received recognition. And recognition can come from their supervisor, and it also can come from coworkers in that question. And so we're using these responses as a district to really focus in on some areas that we can improve on, and then also celebrate some of the areas that we saw some high strength and growth in. And we're also working with our admin team and others in the district to do a book club around the Gallup survey. So they have a lot of things that we can focus in to improve on the different areas and to support our staff even more.
So a nice thing about having three different vendors and three different surveys is it really targeted the needs of those populations, but we definitely saw threads through all three, you know, purposely chosen and collected by us, but also pre-existing in the survey design. And the fact that we have students and staff really telling us and families telling us that the students are cared for, and with staff that they have someone with them in their building or program that they feel cared for and seen, is a really, really big positive that we wanted to focus on. Of course, the second one here, there's going to be a need and a continued need to express emotions constructively and really improving that self-esteem of, okay, what is, what is something I'm really excited about? How can I build on that? How can I add value to my community? Because they all have it. We've met all our students, they're amazing, amazing people. Again, families felt like there was strong communication and it was accessible. So it was in multiple modes, your phone call, on the website, a newsletter, email, there was some easy and accessible communication. And then as Director Tuckrell just said, the staff really expressed a commitment to a high quality of work. And we can definitely advocate and say that we've seen that in the classrooms and the PLC work and the growth that we've seen and we're just experiencing before this presentation, and just that need for recognition. So just hearing about, that was great, or that was impressive, or how did you do that? Or look at this growth. So that is our roundout of this year's climate surveys, and it was really, really exciting to see what they were telling us.
All right, any questions?
Would it be possible for us to see the actual questions and answers from the teacher survey? Seems like we got kind of a, like a bird's eye view on that one. Is that something that we would get to see, all of that?
Yep. Yes, I'm just thinking through all the different surveys. We have the Minnesota Student Survey, I think it's, I don't know, Disa's at a hundred pages or something?
Yeah, it's quite long.
And then the, the staff, the staff Gallup, so it was beyond teachers, staff in general. And then the parent survey, DCU have that in a disaggregated form that you can send?
Yes, and that one's much shorter, so that one's a little more digestible.
Thanks.
All right, other questions? Well, thank you so much for all the hard work compiling this and looking forward to hear how this continues on. All right, we're going to move on to the Minnesota School Board Association Membership. We have been talking about the National School Board Association Membership, the NSBA. This one's the MSBA, different organization, very similar name. So this is the time of year where we renew our, our membership to the MSBA. And so, sorry, I gotta expand this so I can actually read it. Our MSBA membership fees are due for the Columbia Heights District. This twenty-two, twenty-three membership dues would be eight thousand seven hundred fifty-six dollars, which is an increase of three dollars from last year. This also comes with our Board Book subscription, which is what we use for these meetings, where our computers are currently all logged into Board Book. And that rate would be two thousand one hundred dollars, which is the same as the previous school year. So this will be brought forward at a future meeting for approval. The fee for, oh, sorry, and also the fee for our MSBA policy service renewal is seven hundred and fifty dollars, and this is an increase of twenty dollars from last year. As we know, we base our school policy kind of in the, in the, in the sense of how we organize it on the MSBA policy. We have augmented, changed those policies to meet our unique goals as a district, but we do use that. And we also rely upon their attorneys to help us interpret state statute as it is often changing, so that we are remaining compliant with the state of Minnesota. We refer to them for questions quite often, yes. So it's my recommendation, since I'm the one, you know, bringing this, that we continue and maintain our membership in MSBA, but obviously, that's a board decision. So any questions, thoughts?
I mean, I, I appreciate what they do for us, their advocacy, and also, as we talked about earlier, just being a resource for us. So they do a lot of really good work in our policies. Just knowing that they're doing the legwork for us is huge, so very valuable.
And the training opportunities that, that we participated in as well.
All right. All right, well, this will appear on a, it says brought forward at a future meeting. It looks like our, it doesn't say on here when our membership is due. So we must be okay waiting till August. All right, I got a thumbs up from Dawn. Good sign. All right, so this will be brought back to an August meeting for further, or for a actual, as an action item. Speaking of action items, we're moving on to the action items. And the first one is the Minnesota State High School League Membership Resolution. Again, welcome back, Jake Henderson.
Yes, Superintendent, members of the board, Superintendent Stendvik, thank you for having me again. Our mission states creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. And then the Minnesota State High School League does encompass all of our values. The Minnesota State High School League Membership Resolution is an action item tonight, and actually, an annual action item that we must take to renew our membership in the MSHSL. I provided information on membership as well as a little bit about the Minnesota State High School League at the May twenty-four, two thousand twenty-two meeting. And it is my recommendation that the board renews our membership in the Minnesota State High School League.
Great, I'm going to read the resolution and then I'll ask for a motion in a second.
Thank you.
Resolution for the twenty-two, twenty-three membership in the Minnesota State High School League, resolved that the governing board of school district number thirteen, county of Vanoka, state of Minnesota, delegates to control, supervision, and regulation of interscholastic athletic and fine arts events referred to Minnesota, referred to in Minnesota statutes, section one twenty-eight C point zero one, to the Minnesota State High School League, and so hereby certifies the state commissioner of education as provided for by Minnesota statutes. Further resolved that the Columbia Heights High School, that Columbia Heights High School is authorized by this, the governing board of said school district to, one, renew its membership in the Minnesota State High School League, and, two, participate in the approved interschool activities sponsored by said league and its various subdivisions. Further resolved that this governing board hereby adopts the constitution, bylaws, rules, and regulations of said league and all amendments thereto as the same as are published in the latest edition of the league's official handbook on file at the office of the school district or as appears on the league's website, as the minimum standards for governing participation in said league-sponsored activities, and that the administration and responsibility for determining student eligibility and for the supervision of such activities are assigned to the official representative, representative identified by the governing board. I think that last paragraph was all one sentence, there is not a period in it. So can I have a motion? I'm looking for a motion to approve the resolution to stay in the Minnesota State High School League.
I'll move.
Molly?
Second.
All right, any, any questions?
Yeah, I think I might not have been at the meeting where we talked about this, but my question, Jake, is just what, when we talk about equity, I know there's been like lots of just different racial incidents in sporting events lately. We have LGBTQ equity stuff going on, and I just want to just hear your take on making sure that that's something that this league is aware of and helpful with and something that we feel like they share our values on.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question, thanks for asking. Yeah, it's, it's my belief that they are in alignment with our district values as well as our equity statements. You know, when, I'm blanking on the month here, but it just, sometime in the winter, many, many incidents of racial slurs as well as just actions took place. And I would say, at least during COVID, there was a weekly meeting with all ADs. Now it's about every other week, and that was addressed. They came out with an equity statement as well, and, you know, just opened up space for us to talk about that. This isn't technically a part of the Minnesota State High School League, but we do work with the Minnesota State High School League in the Tri-Metro Conference, and it's been a top priority for us, talking about that and how we work with schools, how we ensure that we have a safe environment for our student athletes and students to participate in. And one of those schools actually is joining our conference next year that did deal with a lot of the racial slurs coming at their school. And so just getting that perspective from that AD as well as that school leadership was really good for me personally, and I think for our group in the Tri-Metro. Does that answer your question? I think you asked about... Does that answer your question? I think you asked about LGBTQ plus community as well and their, I do feel that they're, they're in alignment with, with our beliefs and our values there as well. And there are opportunities for all students to participate in activities and do that equitably.
Awesome. Thanks, Jake.
Yeah.
All right. Other questions? All right. Hearing none, we'll have another roll call vote.
Lewis?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Simon?
Aye.
All right. Resolution passes. Thank you, Mr. Henderson.
Thank you all for your time.
Yeah. We'll move on to the Every Student Succeeds Act Grants. So once again, very busy night for Director Tuckrell.
Thank you, Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Senbik. All school districts receiving Every Student Succeeds Act Title I, Title II, Title III, and Title IV funding are required to submit an annual application for these funds with a budget and narrative that describe how the district plans to use this money. On June 14th, I presented our preliminary allocations as well as plans for the use of the funds. And I'm here tonight seeking approval of the preliminary title funding for the 2022-2023 school year.
All right. Any questions for Director Tuck? Oh, sorry. Looking for a motion to move this forward.
Moved.
Brenna? All right.
Second.
Second, Molly? Any discussion?
I'll just make the comment, as Director Tuckrell said, that this was discussed pretty extensively at the July, at the July, June, I don't know about the, June 14th meeting. So if anybody watching at home can pull that up. She did an excellent job of going through each detail with us at that time.
All right. So the motion is to approve the ESA grants for 2022-2023. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? All right. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the preliminary budget 2022-2023 with Director Hennickens.
Thank you, Chair Severson, members of the board, and Superintendent Senbik. This evening, seeking approval for the 22-23 preliminary budget. Every year, the district and all districts in the state are required by July 1st to have the school board approve a preliminary budget for the next fiscal year. This was presented in detail at the June 21st school board meeting. But quickly, I'm going to share my screen here. Just put the summary up on the screen. So just a, just a quick overview. See the revenues and expenditures, expenditures in the middle there. So we'll just kind of go down to the bottom. So what we're seeking approval for is a revenues budget of $62,749,000, $67,000. An expenditure budget is $62,804,343. So it's a slight decrease in the overall total funds balance. We did see at the top a slight increase in our unassigned. And then, and we do see a slight increase in our, in our total general fund. And then, and then we did see, and then there's an expected decrease in our food service fund and then our community education fund. And again, at the bottom, just over $50,000 in decrease for all funds. So again, this evening, seeking approval for the preliminary budget for fiscal year 23.
All right. Questions? Oops, sorry. I did it again. As you heard Director Hennickens say, we're looking for a motion to approve the 2022-2023 budget.
So moved.
Lorian? Second.
Second.
Brenna? Discussion now. Questions?
Aye.
Of course.
Again, I think just a point of clarification. So Director Hennickens presented this budget to us at the work session. So if you are watching at home, there is not a recording of that. All the work sessions are open to people to attend those as well. And at that meeting, we discussed, you know, this is a preliminary budget. There are revisions that are made throughout the year. So there are some assumptions made. And I think just continued conversations that as a district, we have to do the same or more with, with funding that hasn't, hasn't increased with inflation. And, and this is, you know, there's cross subsidies, as we've talked about before. There's, there's overall challenges. And this is something, as a district, we need to continue to be very transparent about and to continue to talk about because, you know, there is funding that we have available right now through COVID. At some point, that's going to go away. And we have to fund to be able to do what, what we need to do. And as a board, we ask our, our administration, our superintendent to look for efficiencies. We have a board policy of having our fund balance. It's between 6% and 12%. We're, we're on the low end of that. So continued fiscal responsibility, but also knowing that there's probably going, there will be some asks as we move into the future of how we can support our staff and support our students and continue the growth that we need with the materials and the support that the teachers are saying that they need. We just talked about in the survey. That has to come from somewhere. The funds have to come from somewhere. And so talking to our state representatives, talking to our federal representatives, looking locally, we have to be able to fund our schools to make the growth and the progress that we need to do. So there's my, my bunch of comments.
I couldn't possibly add to that because I think you covered everything. So thank you, Lorian, member Mueller, for taking the time to say all of that. Appreciate it.
It feels weird to add something to that after you said it.
Go for it, though.
It's not necessarily an add, just a and, really, just the idea that you might look at that number and say, $62 million, that's a ton of money. And it really is a ton of money. $62 million is objectively a lot of money. But in terms of what it's meant to accomplish, it's one, it's, it's a, it's four, we're spending the money on the right things for the right reasons. And obviously, we're more than willing to share those with you if you're at home and you're like, wow, I want a greater detail. You can shoot us an email and, and we'd love to talk to you more about that. But also, it's not a, we're not a, you know, a wealthy school district where we have all this change to just throw around at things. We're running on efficiencies. Is that a fair way to put it? And doing the very, very best we can with the money that we're given. And we're thankful for the money we're given, but also, a quick Google of the terms special education, cross subsidy, and the different cross subsidies that exist in the state of Minnesota and across the country will help you inform your understanding of what's happening. And the inflationary increases, as now we all look forward to likely higher rates of inflation. And so the school, it's going to, it's going to test our budget skills. And we're getting thankful for our staff, for all of you, and Director Hennickens for putting this together, Superintendent Senbik. Yeah, that was a long and. Sorry.
Yeah. I mean, I'm learning all this stuff kind of new and just to really understand that we've cut $5 million from the budget in the last five years. We get the smallest amount of tax money from our local area of almost in the state, but definitely anywhere around here. Like, some of our surrounding districts are getting $2,000 a pupil. We're getting what, like 600s?
309.
300 a kid. So I just, I want the community to know that, like, these guys are magicians. They're taking next to nothing and educating our kids with it. And so I just, you know, thank you for your responsibility and the way that you guys just stretch the dollar because you work really hard at it. So.
All right. Thank you for everyone's comments. And again, thank you, Director Hennickens. We'll, the motion is to approve the preliminary budget for 2022-2023. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? All right. Motion carries. We will move on to the long-term facilities maintenance plan. And again, Director Hennickens.
Thank you, Chair Severson, members of the board, and Superintendent Senbik. Presented on the June 14th regular school board meeting in, in more detail, or in detail, was the district 10-year long-term facility maintenance plan. This evening, we are seeking approval of that plan and which needs to be submitted by the end of July 2022. Since this is the last board meeting, so our last opportunity for that approval. This plan allows us to access the long-term facility maintenance or LTFM dollars for deferred maintenance projects for our facilities. And it's again, require a plan that we submit to MDE to access those dollars.
All right. So the motion is to approve Columbia Heights Public Schools 10-year long-term facility maintenance plan.
So moved.
Lorian?
Second.
Second, Molly. Discussion. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? All right. Motion carries. Continuing on with the Northeast Metro 916 Long-Term Facilities Maintenance Plan.
Thank you, Chair Severson, members of the board, and Superintendent Senbik. Every year, as well as our district long-term facility maintenance plan, we bring the District 916 Long-Term Facility Maintenance Plan. In order for the intermediate District 916 to access facilities deferred maintenance dollars, they have to levy through their member districts. And we are that member district or one of those member districts. So we have a portion of their long-term facilities and dollars that we support. This again, was presented at the June 14th regular school board meeting in detail. And this evening, seeking approval for that. 916 Long-Term Facility Maintenance Plan.
All right. I'll read, again, this is a resolution, so I'll read it. And then I'll ask for a motion. Resolution approving Northeast Metro 916 Intermediate School District's Long-Term Facility Maintenance Program Budget and authorizing the inclusion of a proportionate share of these projects in the district's application for fiscal year 2024 Long-Term Facilities Maintenance Renewal. Be resolved by the School Board of School District Number 13, State of Minnesota as follows. One, the School Board of Northeast Metro 916 Intermediate School District has approved a Long-Term Facilities Maintenance Program Budget for its facilities for the 2023-2024 school year. Pay 2020-23 levy in the amount of $277,298, of which School District Number 13's proportionate share is $9,389 for pay-as-you-go projects. The various components of this program budget are attached heretofore and are incorporated herein by reference. Said budget is hereby approved. Minnesota Statute Section 123B.53 subdivision 1, as amended, provides that if an intermediate school district's long-term facility maintenance budget is approved by the school boards of each of the intermediate school districts, member school districts, each member district may include its proportionate share of the cost, cost of the intermediate school district program in its long-term facilities maintenance revenue application. Three, the proportionate share of costs of the intermediate school district's long-term facility maintenance program for each member school district to be included in its application shall be determined by utilizing a blended rate, where 25% of the rate is determined by multiplying the total cost of the intermediate school district's long-term facilities maintenance times the ratio of the member school district's net tax capacity to the total net tax capacity of the intermediate school district. And 75% of the rate is determined by multiplying the total cost of the intermediate school district's long-term facilities maintenance times the ratio of AMD utilization by district to the total AMD utilization. The inclusion of this proportionate share in the district's long-term facilities maintenance revenue application for fiscal year 2024 is hereby approved, subject to approval by the Commissioner of Education. Upon receipt of the proportionate share of the long-term facility maintenance revenue attributable to the intermediate school district program, the district shall promptly pay to the intermediate school district the applicable aid or levy proceeds. And we're all still awake. A motion to move that mouthful forward.
So moved.
Molly? Second. Brenna? Any discussion on that? All right. This is another roll call vote.
Lewis?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Simon?
Aye.
All right. Resolution passes. Great. We will move on to NSBA, which is the National School Board Associationship Membership Renewal. I'm sure I totally just misspoke that, but I think y'all get the idea. So we have been discussing at subsequent meetings now, a couple of meetings, our membership in the, in the NSBA for the upcoming year. And the motion is again to approve the Columbia Heights Public District's affiliate membership in the National School Board Association and authorize the payment of its dues. As we've had continuing conversation, I will, I'll make the motion to approve our membership in the NSBA for 2023 and the authorization of payments in the amount of $4,165 for the period of July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023. Can I get a motion to move that forward?
Did you say you made, you were making the motion?
Yeah. It's, it's, that's what the motion is.
Okay. So you weren't making the motion.
Oh, sorry. I, can I make a motion? All right. Natty made the motion. All right. I never get to do that. Second?
Second.
Molly? Okay. Now's the time for discussion. Yeah.
And I know that we had some conversations at our work session last week as well. And I don't know, Brenna, if you want to talk to this too. And as it was brought up in our previous meeting on the 14th, I believe that the MSBA has parted ways with the NSBA. And just some conversation, I think, looking at what the membership rates are for the upcoming school year or budget year for NSBA. And knowing that we utilize them primarily right now for conference, the membership does not equate the discount for the conference. So we can still attend the conference without being members, and it would be less than the annual membership. It's my recommendation, or how I would like to see this, is that we take a pause and take a year off of our NSBA membership to see how that organization shakes out with some of their transitions and different state organizations moving away from NSBA. I think that's just the most fiscally responsible for us at this time.
Yeah. I mean, I think that our discussion at the work session was not that we're making any, any choice other than like fiscal responsibility and going, it's probably not worth the money to us. And just very clearly that it's not part of any other drama that's happening between the two organizations, but much more that we're probably not getting bang for buck on this one. So.
Yeah, I agree. I can support that. I know at the June 14th meeting, when I was present, the conversation really was about the cost versus, you know, if we are members for the conference versus not being members. And so with that being, you know, addressed and understanding what it is, then I think I agree with proceeding without having their membership this year.
All right. I feel comfortable with that, too. So remembering that, oh, any more discussion? Remembering that the motion was to approve the membership renewal. All those in favor? All those opposed? No. Nay. No.
Nay.
Abstain? Motion does not carry. Is that all I said, Dawn? Motion fails. There we go. All right. We will then move to a closed session. So in accordance with Minnesota Statute 13D.05, the board will adjourn to closed session for the purpose of discussing the superintendent evaluation. So looking for a motion to approve moving to closed session.
So moved.
Lorian?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor of moving to closed session?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? All right. Motion carries. We will, as we always do for a closed session, we will stop the feed. It's my understanding that last time we did this, we did not return to the video at the end. Are we planning to do that?
I'm not sure we're able to.
No, we're, we said we're not. So those of you at home, So, those of you at home, have a good night. The only thing you're missing is the return to open meeting. All right. Oh, we're good, okay, cameras are rolling. We will now return to open session after we met in closed session in accordance with Minnesota Statute 13d(c)(05) for the purpose of discussing the superintendent evaluation. And also in compliance with that statute, we give a summary of what was discussed. We discussed the superintendent's two goals for this year. The first is overseeing implementation of the district's communication plan year two. We have, we have discussed it and see the superintendent as being highly effective in this category. Her feedback was largely positive, especially given the challenges of this pandemic year, this quasi-pandemic pandemic endemic year. We have offered feedback in navigating a post-pandemic world now and prioritization of responsibilities as things shift around. And again, a post-pandemic endemic, what are we calling it, world? With regards to goal two, which is oversee and monitor the work of renewing a safe and inclusive and welcoming environment for students attending Columbia Heights Public Schools in the COVID-19 pandemic and era beyond. We, again, are offering a highly effective categorization of the superintendent's work. But we also see in this very difficult category and this pandemic, post-pandemic world, some areas for growth, which we discussed with the superintendent during our evaluation. And that will conclude our summary of our closed session. Moving back on to our agenda, we'll move on to board topics. Any board topics out there? All right, hearing none, we will adjourn our meeting at 9:30 PM.